Test, studio, can I be heard?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, hello and welcome to the public hearing on the restraint and seclusion policy. On behalf of the entire school board, I would like to thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. This hearing is being livestreamed at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. We have thirty-six speakers who will address the board at this public hearing. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and we ask that you please remain within that time limit. The timer will begin when you start speaking, and the timer will sound at the conclusion of three minutes. When your name is called, please unmute your microphone and begin speaking. Please mute your microphone at the end of your three minutes. Our clerk will be calling our speakers, so at this point, I will invite Ms. Mulberg to please call our first speaker.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Ariel Ananewo.
Good evening, everybody. I want to talk about restraint and seclusion. Restraint and seclusion is bad. I don't like it. It hurts. They hurt my brother, and they've hurt me. I don't want them to hurt any more kids. You should be teaching not hurting. Please help kids and stop machines exclusion. I give my mom the rest of my time.
Good job, Ariel. I want to take up the rest of Ariel's time, and I just want to say that she's so brave tonight to come forward and share part of her story and her brother's story, and, you know, out of the mouth of babes. So I want to share with you guys a quote from Kim Sanders, who works within Ukuru, which is an alternative to restraint and seclusion. Ms. Sanders says, "Don't be scared to take this leap. With a physical alternative in place to keep everyone safe, it is doable and not so scary. Just look at other schools who have paved the way with success. Be a part of that." And that has four exclamation marks. I also want to say from Mr. Guy Stevings of the Alliance Against Seclusion and Restraint, in his school system, they introduced a new policy to limit the use of seclusion in two years and reduce restraint. They then did a training in Ukuru in Collaborative and Proactive Solutions by Dr. Ross Green, and he just got the data showing the impact. In the 2008-2019 school year, they had 750 restraints and 386 seclusions. After the training and policy changes last year, they had 70 restraints and 78 seclusions. That's down from 750 restraints and 386 seclusions. Cut them down both by ninety percent in a single year. I have a quote here from Alex Campbell, who's an autistic self-advocate. His experiences with restraint and seclusion caused both trauma and pain while the restraint and seclusion was occurring, and it continues to cause trauma and pain to this day. So these are comments from people at large in the community and who have ties to Fairfax County, although they were not allowed to talk tonight. I'm submitting these statements on behalf of them. I also want to say briefly that this leads to the school-to-prison pipeline and the push-out of minority children in particular out of schools, and very heavily black girl push-out. And I will go ahead and talk about that in more detail in my slot. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aviva Lojia.
Hi. My little sister's anxiety got in the way of her talking to you tonight, so you get to talk to me instead. My name is Ari, and I'm a 2019 Chantilly High School graduate and now a sophomore at the University of Vermont. Anxiety runs strong in our family and manifests differently in each of us. Whenever she was younger, my sister's brain would go into fight, flight, or freeze when she got stuck in situations that were difficult for her. When she was in early elementary school, she would freeze and not say anything or burst into tears. Later on, in fifth and sixth grade, later, her brain shifted from freeze to fight, and she would scream and yell and have huge meltdowns at school in front of her peers and teachers. On days that this happened at school, she would be so upset afterwards. She would be completely devastated, mortified, humiliated of how she'd acted in front of her friends and her classmates. She was even more upset by the school assistant principal making her sit in the office to fill out think sheets where she already knew to rehash situations in writing and explain what she already knew she should do differently. She just couldn't do it differently yet. The school figured out that what my sister needed was a safe, comfortable space for her to go when she was feeling really frustrated. She was allowed to read books or write, use fidgets, and snuggle in a beanbag chair in the counselor's office that was lit by an everyday lamp instead of the jarring overhead fluorescent lights, and for that, we're eternally grateful. If her school had seclusion rooms, this story would have ended very differently. Being shot in an empty, tiny space would have made things so, so, so much worse for her. Honestly, I cannot imagine how ugly those scenes would have been. With time and right support in place, my sister is a totally different person than she used to be. She's made fantastic friends in middle school. She's loving her teachers and especially loves her electives. She's so much better at advocating for what she needs from her teachers, and for that, I am so proud of her. I yield my time.
Our next speaker is Michelle Kade.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Kades, president of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA. With less than three days to register to speak tonight and without mention by DSS in yesterday's newsletter about the new proposed policy and this hearing, I offer thanks to everyone testifying on short notice, and I thank the school board for this opportunity. Our SEPTA board members easily spent over 100 work hours during our Thanksgiving weekend writing recommendations for changes to the first draft of the proposed policy. We are ecstatic that our feedback was so well-received by the board and by DSS. Additional feedback will be forthcoming. At the SEPTA and FCC PTA event this week, a national-leading expert in this field, Dr. Ross Green, shared that a fifty percent reduction in the use of restraint and seclusion can be achieved simply by making a public commitment to end this practice. He said that the remaining fifty percent reduction is harder because it requires that staff be trained differently, going from predominantly reacting reactively to acting proactively. Dr. Green explained that when we are being proactive and collaborating with kids on solving their problems, the need for restraint and seclusion almost disappears over time because the system is not focusing on behaviors, but rather it's focusing on solving problems that would have caused the behavior to happen. The timeline for the implementation of this policy must be given very careful consideration. Dr. Green shared that if an outright ban occurs without something to take its place, that could backfire. If staff feel ill-prepared to run a classroom without restraint and seclusion as a tool, we must listen to them. This does not mean we should maintain the status quo. It means we must have a specific, detailed plan for reduction of restraint and seclusion spelled out in the policy. This should not be a long process, but it must be explicit and detailed. I asked Dr. Green where we go from here, and I will conclude in his words with his response. This would be a very good seven months, December through June, to get people up to speed on these solutions, learning a different assessment methodology that identifies problems that were causing the behaviors. That's a huge step, and that alone gives us something important to focus on. Do I think anybody who's restraining and secluding kids in FCPS right now can learn how to do the assessment tool in the next two to three months? Slam dunk. The next part's a little harder and takes more time, but it's learning how to solve those problems with kids. FCPS, who I communicate with, knows I'm ready to work together to make this happen. I know that Fairfax County is unique in some ways and not so different in other ways. If we can show that it can be done rapidly, without teachers feeling unsafe and without an increase in unsafe episodes, we will have done something that the entire country can model. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Campbell.
Good evening. I am speaking tonight as vice president of Fairfax County SEPTA. Dr. Braybrand, at the end of the last work session, you said, quote, "Every incident may not be a trauma incident." There is a reason that restraint and seclusion are so tightly controlled in the medical environment. In fact, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services specifically says, quote, "Seclusion and restraint are dangerous and traumatic, not only to the individuals subjected to these practices, but also for the staff implementing them. No qualifiers. They are traumatic. Period." We are frustrated at the lengths to which our community has had to go since March 2019 to convince this district to understand this. We thank the school board for pushing forward boldly on this policy last week. Looking at the policy, we continue to emphasize the importance of data disaggregation. The current incident reports would only disaggregate by special education status, whether a child receives special education services or not. FCPS must further disaggregate this data and track by special education eligibility label to determine if there are specific subgroups of the special education community being disproportionately restrained or secluded. We have heard Central Office say that school staff needs to have access to restraint and seclusion in order to keep themselves and students safe. However, according to leading expert Dr. Ross Green, there is absolutely no data -- excuse me -- no data to support that these practices keep anyone, students or staff, safe. Let me repeat that. There is no data to support that these practices keep anyone safe. There is, however, plenty of data to show that people, both students and staff, are routinely hurt during these practices. Please don't mistake us. We fully understand the challenging and dangerous behaviors that exist. You'll hear striking testimony about this tonight. We acknowledge the need for staff to have the tools necessary to address challenging behaviors safely, and most importantly, proactively. As Dr. Green said in his discussion with SEPTA on Monday night, restraint and seclusion are not crisis prevention tools. They are crisis management tools. Staff are crying out for true crisis prevention tools, and those are sorely lacking in FCPS. In our conversation with Dr. Green, he said that the, quote, "Part that's a little harder and takes a little bit more time is learning how to solve those problems collaboratively and proactively with kids, but I'm ready, and Fairfax County Public Schools, who I communicate with, knows I'm ready." SEPTA was happy to hear that FCPS was beginning to contract with Dr. Green last spring, and we look forward to announcements soon that this effort is back on track with even more urgency. FCPS must roll out Dr. Green's training as soon as possible to CSS sites, where seclusion rooms will be banned upon return from winter break. SEPTA would like to see the county-wide ban on seclusion go into effect in August 2021 or at the absolute latest, August 2022. It makes absolutely no sense to plan to enact a full ban on seclusion in January 2023 in the middle of a school year, as currently proposed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren McCauley.
First, thank you to the school board for unanimously voting to hold this public hearing. Hearing from the public on this is essential. We don't have a ton of speakers at this hearing. For most people, seclusion is unimaginable, something that happens to deeply disturbed kids who aren't like theirs. The children to whom seclusion happens and their families are often so traumatized by it that they can't speak about it for years. My son James is a kid who could have gone either way, depending on what happened at school. He is now an FCPS success story. He is gifted and autistic, doing well in Level 4 AAP with special education supports. He is a shining example of what these kids can look like when they are not brutalized by their schools. One of the biggest what-ifs in our family's life is, what would have happened to our son if he'd been in FCPS when he was younger? James grew up overseas. He struggled in school, spending kindergarten and first grade hiding underneath the table and crying. His first-grade teacher was fascinated by him, and we formed a partnership to identify James's triggers and find things which worked. It was slow but very rewarding. By third grade, he was doing well. He was allowed to visit the library, Maker Space, and school counselor's office whenever he needed. One day, James had a meltdown on the playground and was crying on the ground. Classmates and teachers came close to try to help, and he kicked them. After a few minutes, he was calm enough to cooperate, walk to the counselor's office, sit on a beanbag chair, and build Legos for a while. Life continued, and we had many more family adventures. I'll tell that story again if we'd lived here. James is eight years old, and one day, he violently attacks children and staff on the playground. He is forcibly restrained, carried to a six-foot-by-six-foot concrete room, shoved inside, and the door is locked. He screams and begs to be released for what feels like an eternity. When he comes home that day, he doesn't speak and goes straight to his room. It is clear that something very wrong has happened, but I don't know what. The next day, I get a call from the school telling me he was secluded twenty hours earlier. After the first time, all James's feelings of trust and safety at school are gone. His love of learning is replaced by continual panic and a powerful fight-or-flight survival instinct. He becomes one of the children secluded hundreds of times by FCPS. He is permanently changed. My children lose the brother they had, and our family adventures stop. Seclusion is an act of violence and fear, and it ruins some children forever. Stop locking our children into tiny concrete cells. Seclusion must be banned entirely, with physical removal of all doors to prevent room being used in violation of policy. Train staff fully in humane ways to help children. Give us all the comfort of knowing that this particular trauma will never be inflicted on children of any
Our next speaker is Carrie Murphy.
Good evening. Thank you to everyone who has contributed to this policy. I 100% support banning seclusion and hope you continue to consider banning at all FCPS schools. I still think more changes are needed. I request the board to continue to ask about the positive intervention strategies and provide the appropriate funds for FCPS to implement. One proposed plan includes contracting with Dr. Green to implement the CPS model. However, this is currently only planned for CSS sites. His model works best when implemented when the behavior begins, which most likely is at base school. If his model is implemented at base school, the majority of the behaviors can be addressed and avoid a placement at a CSS or other school. Also, since placement can take years, these students are not being provided the strategies they need. I hope you can consider revising Green's contract and provide the funds to implement at base school. I also support banning subpoena restraint. At Island Creek, a base school, I observed this occur numerous at times to a kindergartner. I can still vividly see it and remain so disturbed. I want to make it clear, RNS is happening at all schools, not just CSS, Burke, etc. Base school is also where most of RNS was done on my child. Although I'm ecstatic about banning seclusion, I worry greatly seclusion will still occur and go unreported. My son was restrained and secluded more than twenty times at both a base and CSS school. Despite FCPS documentation of incidents and my own observance of these incidents, I've yet to receive one notification. Dr. Braybrand, I'm still waiting for a response to investigation request. Also, after observing and learning of many past incidents of the restraint and seclusion on my child at Island Creek, I request and obtain an agreement from Saratoga CSS that my son would never be taken to the seclusion room, while suing me, instead of taking my child to a seclusion room, they would seclude him elsewhere, again, not notifying me. I leave you with this thought. The last day my child was in an FCPS school, he was escalated by FCPS CSS train staff for hours. I happened to be in the building at the same time in a three-plus-hour IEP meeting, yet no one came to get me. After I left, they finally called me. When I returned to school, I found my child secluded in a room eating lunch on a dirty floor. I requested him to get all his belongings, and we never returned again. He has been home since that day in October 2019. FCPS documentation shows my child was so traumatized, he wrapped himself up in a dirty rug in a seclusion room in hope FCPS staff stops talking and escalating him. Yes, wrapped himself up in a rug, using a coping strategy, and hope they stop. My son does not exhibit this type of behavior outside of school. To this day, he does asynchronous learning, as he is still even too traumatized to go back to a CSS site and even do synchronous learning. Despite being out of the trauma of an FCPS building for a year, he still rolls up in a ball when he has to talk about it, what FCPS has done to him. It's irreversible, and it must end. Thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Our next speaker is Ally Lusari.
Hi. I'm very thankful to the Department of Special Services for a much-improved second draft. This draft showed willingness to compromise with the school board and stakeholder groups. I appreciate not only the compromise, but the common goal to ultimately ban seclusion. I recommend stating the goal clearly in the policy. In Section 7, Subsection 8, please restate the ban clearly. I recommend seclusion is banned in all FCPS schools other than Burke School and Key and Kilmer Center. Also, in Section 5, Prohibitions, please add a clear statement that "A full prohibition on seclusion on all schools will take effect on date XXX." I didn't say January 1, 2023, because I'm concerned with starting the ban in the middle of the school year. This would confuse new hires and forego the opportunity to train them in a firm belief in alternatives to seclusion during the teacher of work and training dates immediately preceding a new school year. Change in the date of the prohibition on seclusion to August 15, 2022. As Dr. Ross Green told SEPTA and many FCPS distinguished guests at the beginning of this week, "A committed staff could accomplish successful ban and seclusion in seven months." So can staff commit? I am FCPS staff. Do I believe? Yes, when they are given better tools. The Department of Special Services has discussed piloting the Ukuru system and Dr. Ross Green's collaborative and proactive solution CPS. Let me describe them. Ukuru successfully removed both restraint and seclusion grafts in Virginia for several thousand youth and young adults with autism, intellectual disability, and emotional challenges. Ukuru uses trauma-informed approach they call comfort versus control. They also use protective gear and blocking pads, which allow staff to stay safe. Ross Green's CPS model asserts, "Kids do well if they can." He knows that insisting all behavior is a choice promotes misguided efforts and incentivizing better behavior. Struggling students often already desperately desire to meet expectations, not draw attention to themselves, and just feel successful. And CPS, you work with the student to see what's in the way of them meeting expectations. Why are these programs ideal for FCPS teachers and staff? FCPS teachers are generally already trauma-informed and aware of how the autonomic nervous system drives maladaptive and aggressive behaviors, but they may still struggle with how to apply that knowledge to the student standing in front of them. This manifests in broken-record requests to make a better choice to students who feel out of control of their actions. Teachers and staff have autonomic nervous systems, too. Some of the students present regular threats to a sense of order, predictability, and safety. Overtaxed, triggered, and desperate teachers make mistakes. They have sometimes used seclusion and restraint against policy and better judgment. But now, give them methods that are trauma-informed and compassionate. Let them coach students in becoming their better self, and don't reduce a teacher's job to assigning points and levels and awarding and taking privileges. Restraint and seclusion will go down, but most importantly, teachers' joy will go up. We signed up for this job to appreciate students as individuals, not as a set of behaviors to be scored. We signed up for this job to change students' lives. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diane Cooper-Gould.
Good evening. I'm Diane Cooper-Gould, advocacy chair of SEPTA. Tonight, I'm stepping outside of my role as an advocate and putting on my personal parent hat. My children have a right to their privacy, and I'm balancing my duty as a parent with my obligation as an ethical human being in our community. Without sharing all the specifics of my child's situation, I will tell you that he was traumatized by his school experiences, including being secluded at least three times that I know of for behaviors directly related to his disability. I ask you to imagine your child at five or six, excited to enter public school, brimming with joy, curiosity, and hope. Imagine the sparkle in their eyes. Imagine watching as late summer fades to winter, and your child's eyes grow gradually cloudy and cold, like the weather. His behavior changes to anger and withdrawal. You call the school, and you're told everything's fine. There are no problems. But as the days pass, you see your child developing alarming ritualistic behaviors, fearing leaving the house and refusing to speak until ultimately he declares that he is bad and should never have been born. Imagine your seven-year-old punching himself in the stomach and biting himself on the arms because everyone hates him. He is bad, and he should be dead. Imagine turning to school staff for help and having them respond by laughing in your face. Imagine calling specialists, spending tens of thousands of dollars and spending day after day begging for the system to help. Imagine the stress on your marriage. Imagine walking into a school building, hearing a child screaming from behind a door that's being held shut by staff. As you walk closer, you realize the screams are from your child. Imagine frantically approaching and being told not to enter because, in their opinion, seclusion is therapeutic, and if you let him out, it will teach him he gets what he wants. Feel daggers in your gut as you forcibly open the door and find your child weeping, his face and body pressed against a cinder block wall, fingers scratching at the paint as he begs to die because he is a mistake, bad, and should never have been born. Imagine the ensuing years filled with countless therapy sessions, sleepless nights, and feelings of guilt and remorse. Years in which you dedicate yourself and your life to ensuring that other families never have to endure what yours has. And then finally, imagine standing in the public eye and telling everyone about your most private pain in order to convince them that your child is not a mistake and should not be locked in a room begging to die. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Litton-Ted.
My fourteen-year-old son is speech impaired, high-support-needs autistic person who cannot go into any room alone with the door closed, including the restroom or his bedroom. He cannot sleep alone, is terrified to be alone in small spaces, has nightmares, and often wets the bed. These are all symptoms of his trauma from being locked up alone at least 745 times at school. Here is a document from the Kilmer Center I did not see until five years after this occurred, one of hundreds documenting my son's pain and suffering at Kilmer and Kennedy Krieger. I'd like you to imagine this was about your child at age seven in second grade. Two staff physically escorted him into the quiet room. He immediately began to take off his clothes, urinating on his pants, and proceeded to throw them up at the ceiling. Staff took out his wet clothes and gave him dry clothes to put on. It took him twenty minutes to put his clothes on. Then he was calm, and we returned to class. We got gloves and wipes, and Quentin went back in and wiped the floors in the quiet room where he urinated. He did a good job. My son's seclusion documents were the most painful thing I have ever read about any of my four children in twenty-nine years of parenting. Reading is one thing, though, isn't it? He lived it daily. This was his life for seven years. This is the life Fairfax County schools, by not providing appropriate accommodations, created for him. And now, because of it, he'll never be the same. His brain has permanent physiological trauma damage. Dr. Braybrand opined last week about restraint and seclusion that not every incident is traumatic. These are words that can only be uttered by one who has never been subjected to restraint and seclusion. I'm fifty-five years old, I'm ADHD, and dyslexic. I was secluded at school, and almost fifty years later, I still have frequent nightmares about being secluded. Every single incident was traumatic. Every single one. If you've ever been subjected to it or picked up the pieces of your child's shattered life afterwards, if you haven't been subjected to it, you have no credibility telling those of us who have what is and is not traumatic. Twenty months ago, many said you had no idea this was happening in response to the press about restraint and seclusion. Now you know. Our most vulnerable children are being traumatized, screaming, naked, soaked in their own urine and feces, forced to clean up their own urine and feces. I've talked to many FCPS parents. What I am describing is universal. Quentin's experience was not an anomaly, but the norm. Your vote on the seventeenth will be with full knowledge of what seclusion is, that it is not safe, but a form of torture that causes damage to a developing brain. You have the power to end this in all our schools, especially for our most vulnerable at Kilmer, Key, and Burke. What's damaging for most is damaging for all. Seclusion needs to be banned immediately. Will you end it? You simply must. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenna White.
I'm the parent of a FCPS Justice High School graduate and a current middle-schooler. Is my story about restraint and seclusion? I will tell it and let you decide. When my son was in early elementary school, he entered the building with a long trauma history, a thick IEP folder, and a list of other diagnoses. His first FCPS teacher was to be blunt, a stern and controlling person. Either you complied with her demands or you didn't, black or white. How did my son's overdeveloped fight, fight, or freeze autonomic nervous system react to this teacher and the environment she ruled over? He was unable to function in this classroom. Her sticker charts, delivered with a glare, were a threat to his abilities and the opposite of positive support. He did not participate in class. Let's just say there were many calls from the assistant principal. I would pick him up from SAC at 6:00 PM, and if we were lucky, we would make it to the car in time. I was unable to drive the two blocks home because he would explode. Everything he tried to hold in Everything he tried to hold in all day would come out as screaming, tears, kicking the seats and windows, swinging his arms, pulling my hair from the backseat. The entire car would move back and forth, and I feared he would break the glass. When it would be safe enough to make it home, this would continue until he collapsed from exhaustion. He did not pass his S O Ls or any other tests that year. I learned later it was documented that he participated a mere twenty percent of the time in class that year. I feel physically sick to think about how close we came to an outcome ending in restraint and seclusion or handcuffs. What if one of those days his seven-year-old body could not have hung on until six P M? My son is not one of the restraint and seclusion numbers. His story is not unique. How many other children were a hairline trigger away? But at what cost did he and who knows how many other students escape the path that ends in restraint and seclusion? At what cost to his learning, his other relationships while he stuffed it all down and tried to repress it until six P M? When will the demand for a wholesale change in how we understand and relate to our students, especially those who have experienced adversity, reach the tipping point? I have to give up my son's right to privacy to expose his very personal story in a public forum to beg for change. My son is not a crisis to manage, a set of behaviors to control. He is an individual who's had some difficult things happen to him in his childhood and deserves to be understood and supported. We must do better in every classroom and every school. Restraint and seclusion is the tip of an iceberg of a system that needs wholesale change. The experts are a phone call away. Finally, before you tell me we cannot fix the way we understand and support children's behavior now due to the COVID crisis, understand this. When we return to school, we will face a tsunami of need. Children who have been severely impacted by the economic crisis related to COVID are not in any condition to learn. Will we call them defiant? Will we measure their disrespect and put it on a dashboard? Given out of school, this is the true crisis that is coming. S C M P B S isn't going to cut it. We need a true crisis, culture change. Strength, seclusion, you decide and what you want to do.
Our next speaker is Pamela Ananu.
Good evening. So I have the speech prepared, but you know, as I'm listening to parents, and it, our stories are very similar. And I hope that you guys are really listening to the cries, the cries of parents, the cries of these children. You guys are endowed with power as school board members to make a difference in the lives of children. And I ask you today, will you choose life or will you choose death? Will you choose the right thing or will you choose the wrong thing? Jennifer Tid earlier said that you guys said that you didn't know. But really, you guys did know. Because I wrote an email to you guys informing you guys of what was going on at Fairview Elementary School. And there are other education lawyers who have said, who have laughed when they heard that. Because you guys did know. They've litigated these things in due process. They've talked about them in I E P meetings. And so school staff and administration is aware of how detrimental these policies are. So to sit here and to ever say that it's not known is just, it's such a insult to parents and children and their trauma and everything that they've experienced. So I really, really hope that you guys will hear the cries of these parents and of these children. So restraint and seclusion, it's a dangerous and traumatic thing. Unlike what was said last week, yes, every single instance of restraint and seclusion is traumatic to both the children and school personnel, whether they would agree to it or not. It is traumatic for them. And they should all get counseling and debriefing afterwards. Restraints, there are so many different forms of restraint. But much like the one that killed George Floyd at five years old, this was done to my son. He was put in a chokehold by a school resource officer. He couldn't have weighed any more than sixty pounds. But the man that did this weighed at least three times his weight. This was at a ninety-degree angle. When I read the report, he'd been in that hole for forty-five minutes or more. What do you think is happening to somebody's brain as the oxygen is being cut off to their brain? Ask yourself that question. You don't have to be a medical personnel to answer that. In the midst of all this happening, there were school administrators, there were school personnel, no one objected to this treatment. These are adverse practices. They hurt and they kill. I asked you guys if you want blood on your hands. Seclusion. Seclusion is where you shove a child into a room. And at times, it's pure concrete, right? Indeed, they're traumatic and these kids suffer from fight or flight in them. Rather than do this, we, you need to use N K I R U. And there are alternatives. Staff can be trained. We know that.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sana, is, I'm sorry, Sana, was it? Speaker number thirteen, Sana.
Hi, um, I cannot speak. It's too emotional for me. The speaker number thirty-four, Ms. Emily Hega, who I will, who will read my testimony. She will read my testimony. And I am merely saying thank you for her. Thank you.
I didn't know if she was going to be reading it now or after. Our next speaker is Nancy Tubbs.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Nancy Tubbs. I'm an attorney here in Northern Virginia. I'm speaking of my own opinions. I do work for legal services of Northern Virginia, but I am not speaking on behalf of L S N V. I've worked with many families in Northern Virginia, including Fairfax County. I have been witness to a lot of needless suffering that has come out of restraint and seclusion practices. And I've really never seen anything good come out of restraint or seclusion. This issue is just one of the major human rights issues that our society is dealing with right now. And I commend you, school board, for taking on this awesome responsibility to develop regulations that will ultimately hopefully eliminate these practices from Fairfax County Schools. I wanted to give you some comments on the revised regulations. I see that you have a goal to prohibit seclusion. I would like to see that date moved far up, far forward from January first, twenty twenty-three. But I do applaud you for putting in a goal. I'd also like to see a goal. I think we need a goal to significantly reduce restraint. And if you do reduce and eliminate seclusion, I know I'm confident that you will be able to reduce restraint. You mentioned in the regulations, positive behavior interventions and supports, and you reference, including building healthy relationships. I really think that this is an area of significant need among the schools. We need to be able to, for teachers need to be able to create respectful and trusting relationships. And administrators and everyone in the school building needs to know how to create respectful and trusting relationships with the students and with the parents. And this is again, something I have, I've not seen happen. And I think the lack of those trusting and respectful relationships are leading to more and more restraint and seclusion. The definition that you've put in the regulations of seclusion, I don't think this is a really sensible definition. Okay, it should address the confinement or the isolation of a student in a particular space, which it does. But it also excludes situations based on the reason that the child has been placed in that particular location. For example, detention, I S S, timeout, classroom disruption, opportunity to regain self-control, where the student requests a break, et cetera, et cetera. So the exceptions basically swallow the rule here. Seclusion is seclusion. I really am asking you to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lemia Elshazli.
Hello, um, my name is Lemia. I'm speaking, I'm speaking today on behalf of myself, my son, and other moms who have kids with special needs who are my friends. First, I want to talk about my son's experience in the seclusion room. At one point, he was kept in the seclusion room in Kilmer Center for more than an hour. And I didn't know about it only after a couple of days. This continued to be the case and my son's behavior stayed the same and even got worse. He was afraid, he was confused, and clearly in distress when I picked him up from school. The seclusion room was not the solution for the behavior. The school should be equipped with professionals who knows how to deal with those behaviors and de-escalate the behavior itself and not make worse. The seclusion rooms and restraining for kids with special needs is inhumane and unnecessary since they are disabled and don't understand what the, what is the reason for it. After all, they have a disability that hindered them from understanding the environment around them. It's nothing but a temporary jail cell for students. He is not a criminal, criminal. There is a problem in the way the teachers and the I A's or the school staff handle a situation and make it, by making it worse. And at the end, you end up making a child have force and you force him to the seclusion room. Also, when there is a child and you want to reason with him or her, you need to understand that he's still a child and if he's still learning and you're just punishing him for him showing a reaction because when you, the adult, want him to do something and he doesn't want to do it a certain way or the way that you want to do it, then he end up getting a reaction. And then he put into seclusion room. At the end, seclusion room should be banned. And also restraining. And also, I'm going to talk also about my son, my other son who is in kindergarten right now. He doesn't have any disability. He was doing well. And I faced the same problem with the school staff where they didn't know how to talk to him. He is not like that outside school. He's a very normal child, but he is very shy, shy, very shy. He'll die until this night and he will tell that I am shy. I cannot talk. The school that he is in, Forrest Edge, did not understand. I sent you also, Mr. President, an email before and nobody answered me. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daha Saleh. Is speaker number sixteen or seventeen present? Sixteen, Saha Saleh. Okay, we'll go to the next speaker, Teresa Champion. Teresa Champion. Okay, next speaker is.
I thought you unmuted me, sorry. My name is Teresa Champion and I represent the Virginia Autism Project. Virginia Autism Project was formed in two thousand nine to advocate and collaborate on issues impacting autistic individuals in the Commonwealth. First, I want to thank the A C S D and I want to thank Septa and all the families who had input on these, amending the staff policy. And I want to thank the board for your service. Now, staff will tell you that behavior is solely within a child's control. Misbehavior is a conduct disorder and should be punished. But you've heard tonight, could be a skills deficit, could be a social emotional delay, could be brain inflammation, PANDAS or PANS, which is a medical diagnosis, could be trauma. A board certified behavior analyst will tell you that behavior is communication. And I'm going to give you an example. How about I'm in an I E P meeting and I got twenty pairs of eyes looking at me and I start pounding on the table and raising my voice because I'm upset, because I'm fearful, because I'm angry. Well, staff feels threatened and they see serious violence ahead and maybe concerning behavior. This is language from your policy. And they jump up and throw me on the ground and hold me down. And I think I'm just emphatic and making my point. You think this could never happen? It happens every day in your school system. So for adults to use restraint and seclusion is a failure. It's a failure of adults because adults fear limiting or banning restraint and seclusion. But the evidence has shown us, and you've heard tonight, that this has long lasting harm. Is there one person here tonight listening to this that doesn't believe that this is trauma? That doesn't believe children suffer some sort of trauma, their families also? Then you're ignoring the data. You're ignoring the evidence. Like people that question the efficacy of a mask used during a pandemic. So students have told you, experts have told you, parents have told you, victims have told you of the trauma. You are the board. Staff works for you. You can ban restraint and seclusion. It's in your hands. It's in your power to make that policy. So if you want, you can do that. And I beg you to have the bravery and the courage to do so and listen to what these families are telling you. Please see our expanded written comments that we've submitted. And I will tell you, I have a twenty-seven-year-old son who still suffers from the effects of the restraint and seclusion. He suffered at the hands of Fairfax County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Bennet. Ms. Bennet, we can't hear you.
You can.
Maybe if you turn your camera off. The connection is not good. So you're going in and out. There you go.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jen Bennicky and I am the Septa liaison to F C C P T A. Tonight, I am reading testimony by an individual who was as a pediatric intensive care nurse, I'd like to share with you my concerns regarding the current practices used in Fairfax County School District to restrain and seclude children. There are strict rules and regulations that doctors follow set forth by the accrediting body for patient safety and state law in order to restrain patients with as little harm as possible. In addition, the use of restraints for the safety of the patient and others is only while nurses can make the decision that a child is unsafe and in danger, they are legally unable to act on it without a doctor's order. If a child is being restrained for a risk of being violent to others, it is required that a nurse in addition, nurses undergo annual training on the use of restraints and must demonstrate their competency in the use. In the late nineteen nineties, it was determined that children were disproportionately targeted by the staff to be restrained. And the majority of reported deaths related to the use of restraints in the for those who are being restrained or secluded, the emotional and psychological that result from these experiences can be to their in addition to any physical injuries they may have sustained. Here we are twenty years later, continuing this cruel practice despite the known consequences. The A C L U has classified restraint and seclusion in the school setting as a the use of R N S can actually increase aggression and problematic behavior in addition to deteriorating mental health. The focus of the school district should be on developing behavioral plans for children with known issues and identifying their triggers appropriately de-escalate them. In addition, extensive training should be provided to staff who are responsible for caring for these children. Lastly, nursing research has demonstrated that working with children is particularly stressing, more so than working with adults. Psychological supports need to be for caring for children with behaviors. Brief and cost-effective tool can be utilized. Brief and cost-effective tool can be utilized at... What could have gone better, what went well, and what should be done for the situation in the future. In addition, it allows for staff to identify and vocalize emotions they may be... Debriefing can be done within a few hours of the incident or up to a week after, depending on the goals. Thank you very much for providing the community...
Ms. Bennicki, please be sure to email your comments to us. The connection was very weak and much of it was... Didn't be heard. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kate Volp. Number 19, Kate Volp. Okay, speaker number 20, Teresa Early.
Okay. I'm Teresa Early, and I recently retired after 34 years of teaching in elementary CSS programs in FCPS. I have a lot of experience with restraint and seclusion in that setting. I just learned that the doors to the quiet rooms in the CSS programs were removed. In CSS programs, there are many students with extreme mental health issues. At times, there are students who become enraged, experience episodes of mania, or who endanger their own personal safety or that of others. When a child is climbing up on tops of wardrobes and leaping down, he or she is putting his or herself in harm's way. Staff must put hands on that student, and the longer that goes on, the more chance there is for either staff or the student to be hurt. It is much safer to isolate that student in the quiet room for the few minutes it takes to calm down. If an enraged child is chasing other students with a chair over his head, staff may be able to get the chair away, but the student will continue to grab the chairs, and the incident won't be contained unless the student can be contained. Children with emotional disabilities can explode with little warning. We often have children that run away, and if students can't be limited, they're at risk. I've seen students run right into traffic with no concern for their safety. There are sometimes students with suicidal ideation who need to be kept safe in a room until their parents can arrive and not able to grab anything they can to use as a weapon against themselves. If they have to be physically restrained all that time, there's more chance of someone getting hurt. A student who is out of control can be very dangerous even with highly-trained staff. Public school teachers do not have the resources that more restrictive settings do, like the use of medication or one-to-one teaching. Virginia does not have enough pediatric psychiatric hospital beds, and the CSS programs often have to manage children awaiting such a placement and are in crisis for much of the school day. Additionally, in recent years, it has taken six months or so to find a child eligible for private day placement, and by then, there are often no more openings in these schools until the next year. Some of these children kick, spit, bite, and hit others frequently. I'm concerned that with no quiet room, our school staff will be forced to call the police, who are already stretched, and that children will fall victim to the school-to-prison pipeline. Most of the time, the school days in CSS hum along nicely with great progress being made, but some days, safety is a real factor with more than one student at a time in crisis. Teachers need enough staff and procedures to keep the kids safe. Almost 20 years ago, the CSS elementary school programs were headed by principal positions, and the staffing was separate from the co-facility. They changed those to be headed by assistant principals, who were given duties in the general ed building as a whole, and staffing was subsumed into the larger school. I highly recommend that the school board restore the CSS elementary program leadership to principal status and allow those people to focus entirely on CSS programs. You want the most qualified people working with this student cohort. A principal who can focus on these can closely, more closely monitor safety and security issues without being pulled aside for gen ed duties. There aren't enough CSS teachers to simultaneously teach and manage this behavior. And please increase the staffing in the CSS programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Norm Hall.
Sorry, I should be better at this by now. Hi, I'm Norm Hall. I wanted to thank everybody who took the time out to speak tonight and also to all the school board members and staff who are listening. I appreciate that. I appear tonight as a founding member of SEPTA and also a member of its advocacy committee. I have been following the work of the Public Engagement Committee closely this year. One meeting was in person, the rest online. There have been great discussions. One thing I liked was the sharing that it is permissible for school board members to reach out during work sessions to ask members of the public for information relating to a discussion. This is similar to the change in practice of the school board to occasionally reference comments made during citizen time that were pertinent to the discussion. What has been underemphasized is the need to receive information from the public as much as it is to reach out to stakeholders with FCPS messaging, which leads my comments tonight... Sorry, glitch there. On the very important topic of restraint and seclusion, can there be any doubt that SEPTA would be among the groups that should be tapped as a resource for give-and-take with students, families, teachers, and other staff, as well as sources of qualified, important research into what are best practices? I follow all the school board agendas. I was surprised that the restraint and seclusion topic was scheduled for a work session prior to full vetting through the ACSD. Many helpful discussions have been sued defense, thanks to many hard-working people. However, in this area where dehumanizing activities are concerned, there really needs to be a special effort to make sure that all voices are heard, including those of staff who would prefer to have their testimony be provided with some anonymity. In fact, that was why I signed up tonight. I anticipated that not mine would be the voice you hear, but the message would be from somebody with more direct experience, but with some concern about retribution. We were hoping for a maximum amount of time between announcement of the public hearing and the cutoff time for speakers. This did not happen, and as a result, you may not be hearing the full range of perspectives that this topic deserves. Besides time in this, there is an issue about who should be defined as a business partner. For the FCPS website, non-Fairfax County business partners may address the board. The school board chairman may make exceptions about who may address the board during the public hearing. Now, Guy Stevens and Alex Campbell would like to share testimony this evening. Their request to do so have been rejected because they do not reside in Fairfax County. Mr. Stevens is the founder and executive director of the Alliance Against Seclusion and Restraint, which is a national organization based in the DC metro area. Mr. Campbell is a 15-year-old who is working with AASR and wants to share his experiences. AASR has consulted with members of the FCPS Restraint and Seclusion Task Force. It is a working partner with SEPTA, FCCPTA, and Dr. Ross Green. But nationally... Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I look forward to the remaining testimony.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Gruelich.
Hello. I'm Kathy. I would like to thank the school board for their unanimous call for a public hearing on this issue. I am speaking for a parent who wishes to remain anonymous, but who contacted SEPTA so that her story could be heard. I don't even know her name, but I spoke with her. I will refer to her as Mary and to her son as Jim. Jim entered FCPS as a typical kindergartner. After one instance of atypical behavior, the family requested testing, which showed Jim had some learning difficulties. As a result, he started first grade with an IEP because testing indicated a pattern consistent with ADHD, which is commonly accompanied by anxiety. In first, second, and third grade, school went relatively smoothly, and Jim had no significant problems except for one occasion. That day in third grade, he ended up screaming in his classroom, and when the assistant principal came, he used a pencil to try to defend himself from her. Around this time, he was moved to the comprehensive services site at his school. When Jim returned for fourth grade, all the staff whom he had known and trusted were no longer there. This was problematic because it was relatively easy for these new staff, who didn't know him, to assume any difficult behavior was willful, not trauma-based, which it was, a panic so strong that it was beyond his control. Jim was restrained and secluded multiple times in fourth grade. On one occasion, when he was secluded but needed to go to the bathroom, Jim's request was denied, and he ended up using his clothes to clean up the mess. When Jim's father picked him up, he was naked. That year, Jim was diagnosed with PANDAS, which is an acronym for a condition resulting from a strep infection, to which the body's overactive immune system causes inflammation in the brain and behavior changes. Typically, PANDAS symptoms are similar to OCD and ADHD, including a lot of anxiety and non-cooperative behavior. At the beginning of fifth grade, Jim's teacher started work only a few days before school started, and she did not do his behavior intervention plan. At one point, she tried to drag him out of the classroom, causing his head to hit the doorframe. She called to tell his mother, but the teacher did not document the event. On another occasion, Jim left school without permission. Again, his mother was notified, but the school did not complete the required reports. Who is going to check that these reports are submitted? If there's no report, who in the school system will know that it is missing? In subsequent years, FCPS moved him to a public day school and then to another public day school. In both cases, his behavior worsened. Finally, his parents pulled him out of FCPS so that he can learn a ton of tools. That is not a really appropriate public education.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmen Ramos. Speaker number 23, Carmen Ramos. Okay, we'll go to speaker number 24, Sherry Sanford.
Thank you. My name is Sherry Sanford, and I've been the behavioral resource teacher at Key Center, one of two public separate day schools in FCPS for the past three and a half years. I asked to speak today to provide an alternate perspective on the issue of restraint and seclusion. Although there have been terrifying reports of inhumane seclusion and dangerous restraint procedures in Virginia and around our country, the proposal to eliminate safe restraint and seclusion in all FCPS schools is a reaction based on fear and not on current evidence from Key Center, which provides the county with high-quality, safe, and caring services for students with some of the most significant behavioral challenges in the county. Key Center staff, who are members of our crisis response team, are trained in Professional Crisis Management, PCM, which includes procedures for safe, humane restraint, among many other skills for managing student behavior at every point in the crisis continuum, with an emphasis on prevention of pre-crisis and crisis behavior. No staff member ever wants to restrain a student, but there are times when a student's behavior causes actual or imminent harm to himself or others, and a procedure of dynamic holding, like the restraints used for targeted individuals only at Key Center, can effectively halt crisis behavior and quickly shape more appropriate behavior so that students with severe disabilities can readily return to their educational programming. Key Center's transition program focuses on reducing interfering behaviors that made students unsuccessful in other students, other settings in FCPS, and helping students learn more pro-social behaviors with the goal of the eventual transition back to their less restrictive programs. Because we have this focus, we integrate a range of positive behavior supports that help prevent crisis behavior. Additionally, we engage in rigorous data collection, analysis, and reporting of all of our procedures and the resulting changes in student behavior. It is this transparency about what we do and how we do it that makes all of the effort and intensive work that Key Center staff do evident to anyone who visits. Restraint and seclusion are very small subsets of our procedures. They're never used without proper notifications to students, to parents, administration, and central office. I urge our superintendent and every school board member to visit Key Center to see the program provided and review our records because I believe they underscore my position. And my position is this: A one-size-all-fits-policy eliminating restraint and seclusion will harm FCPS students and staff. As a public separate day school, the most restrictive setting within FCPS, Key Center deserves students.
Thank you. I believe so. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Barton.
Hello. My son has had an IEP for all of his years of school. He started out at FCPS with an early intervention program as a toddler. He attended the special education preschool at his base school at the age of two and a half, and he continued there at his base school until sixth grade. By the time he reached sixth grade, he had spent a significant amount of time secluded from his peers and his classroom. He was regularly kept out of his classroom and removed from his classroom. He was never a danger to himself, or to others, or to his teacher. However, they couldn't handle his behavior, so they just simply removed him. I learned five months into something happening to him that he was being kept from joining his class in the lunchroom and that he was being sent to a classroom and isolated by himself. Over five months, he was there by himself every day instead of with his peers. There was a behavior incident, and he was suspended from school for a day. And when we returned, he was told that he could no longer be in the classroom for the rest of the year. Instead, he would be kept in a private room alone, secluded from his peers, and away from everybody. There was two months left in the school year. He ran from the room to the poster on the classroom door, ripping at it because he was no longer part of his school. FCPS made it clear that he wasn't wanted by them. Over the years, he was secluded over and over by isolation and removal. He was traumatized by this and developed anxiety and trust issues. It has greatly affected his emotional well-being. His anxiety grew year over year. He started pulling out his eyelashes and his eyebrows, to the point where he was bald on his face. He would bite his arms, he would pick at his skin, to the point where infections would occur. By sixth grade, he had spoke of suicide because he felt like he was a bad kid. He is now a junior in high school, and his behavior has grown light-years from where it was. But we see the results of the seclusion on him every day. We see it in his SAT results, where we can see gaps of education because he was not in the classroom to be learning. We see the results watching him try to interact with his peers. We see how he isolates himself because that's all he's ever known from being at school. Seclusion has led to long-term damage to my child, and we need to do better for our kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Egerton.
Hi, members of the school board. Thank you for holding this important town hall. My name is Susan Egerton. I'm the president of Parents of Autistic Children of Northern Virginia, and I am here to share its views. I am also a member of the Advisory Committee on Students with Disabilities, representing Ms. Seismorheiser. Although I am not speaking on the ACSD's behalf tonight, my organization, PoAC NOVA, has fully supported its recommendations, which include banning the use of supine restraints, banning seclusion, and requiring same-day parental notification. We believe the amended policy proposed by FCPS is a good-faith effort to address the concerns of parents and other stakeholders and makes progress towards all these goals: banning supine restraints, banning the use of seclusion at all but three schools, and eliminating the practice entirely by January 2023, and requiring same-day parental notification after use of restraint or seclusion. We hope the school board will join us and other stakeholder groups who want to see the revised policy approved, and you can improve on it if you want, to improve safety and reduce traumatization in schools for both students and staff. I'm excited about the great opportunities this will give us as a school system. We will also make this plea. We appreciate that this will be a difficult funding year. If the school board wants to make this policy successfully implemented, it will take resources and training to do it appropriately. We don't believe FCPS staff want to restrain and seclude children. They just don't have the tools and toolkit to help them manage problems and de-escalate behaviors before they believe they are necessary. So you must help to make sure that staff can be trained in applied behavioral analysis, de-escalation techniques, Ross Green's collaborative proactive solutions, Ucaru, and other appropriate skills training that will assist staff in assuring this policy is more than a paper tiger. We may need additional ABA coaches and behavioral improvement teachers to help classroom staff learn better methods of managing behaviors. We are pleased that FCPS is planning to purchase Ucaru pads to ensure our staff are protected while eliminating the harmful techniques that have led to lawsuits, injuries of both staff and students, and traumatization. Please, we don't want to hear more stories like the ones that have been shared tonight. It's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking. We, we want to make sure that policy that's implemented works, and we, we want to have the budget and the resources to ensure that. And we'll see you as you start to deliberate priorities for the FCPS.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Lickenfelt. We'll go on to the next speaker, Amanda Mills.
In 2018, shortly after my son entered kindergarten, he was secluded at least 326 times over 62 school days for nearly 29 hours. These were the documented incidents. While in seclusion, he stripped naked and frequently defecated. As a result of the restraint and seclusion, we saw our boy fade. He lost his communication on his device. He was afraid to go to school. And he had, he continues to have trouble with social interactions and with new adults in situations. Time in our family can be marked by before seclusion and after. Restraint and seclusion is traumatizing and often causes physical injury. Seclusion, seclusion needs to end, and dangerous restraints need to be banned. Do not leave this in place for the most vulnerable students. The definition for seclusion, for seclusion in the proposed policy exempts too much, including removal for disruptive behavior. Likewise, the definition for physical restraint exempts too much, including other actions designed to maintain order and control and reasonable physical contact. These exemptions are too broad and may be abused. Cleaning up a bodily fluid should be added to the adverse stimuli, losing control of bodily functions, vomiting, urinating, defecating are responses to trauma. Making a student clean this up only adds to the trauma. The policy allows for restraint and seclusions where the person imposing it determines that other interventions are or would be in the reasonable judgment of that individual ineffective. But the policy doesn't require other interventions actually be tried first, leaving this reasonable judgment of the person inflicting and involved in the trauma. The policy needs to lay out interventions to be used prior to the use of restraint and seclusion. The policy needs to include language that prevents the use of restraint and seclusion to be written into an IEP or behavior intervention plan. If FCPS plans to implement preventative alternatives, and it needs to, it needs to be staffed and funded. The focus should be preventative. These situations adding both supports for students and funding to implement these supports. Greater emphasis should be placed on supporting student needs, giving the teachers and staff the tools to meet the students' needs, and preventing situations that have previously led to the use of restraint and seclusions. Students go to school to learn. It should be a place where students feel safe. It should not be a place where students are subjected to trauma. Please ban seclusion and dangerous restraints.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanne Sears.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide comments on yet another example of how this school district has broken the trust with parents and children. When parents send their children to school, or rather, when they used to send their parent, when they used to send their kids to school, before the school board bent the knee to organize labor and fully abandoned our children, they did so with the concrete understanding their children would be first and foremost safe. The real challenge: Schools don't know what to do with children who don't know what to do. This school system has primarily focused on pet projects, such as pronoun usage, renaming schools, paying critical, bogus, critical race theorist thousands of dollars, and doing everything but safely educating all children. But let's be clear about why we are here today. Fairfax County Public Schools failed our most vulnerable students in a dramatic fashion, and they got caught. Again, we are here today because the school system got caught. What we are witnessing as taxpayers and parents is a culture of neglect, and a culture that does not value meaningful training for teachers, staff, and administrators. This meeting is yet another example of a school system rotting from the inside out. So let me simplify this for you. What you need to understand is that there is no data to support restraint and seclusion keeping people safe. What we do know is there's plenty of data that shows both students and staff are injured from policies supporting restraint and seclusion. Moreover, this school district is renowned for ignoring training. This is true across the board. This is part of the rot I mentioned earlier. We see it in the countless times teachers ignore social media policies that they are trained on annually, yet continue to ignore. In some instances, board members unapologetically support educators with non-diploms on social media who troll parents with racial slurs. This school system ignores training, and it is unfair to teachers, staff, administrators, but most importantly, devastating to children. It is part of the disease called neglect. So before you pat yourselves on the back after you craft the language for this new policy, let's remember the families here today, and God bless all of them. Your stories are incredible. We are going to watch you closely. To ensure the policy is brought to reality, a new policy, we're going to make certain not a hair on a child's head will ever be harmed again by your neglect and incompetence. A good friend reminded me today of Hanlon's razor. Never attribute the knowledge what can be adequately explained by incompetence. Thank you.
Our next speaker is William Johnson. And Ms. Lickenstein, I, we see you, and we will call your name at the end when we call no-shows. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Hello. I have a child in Fairfax County Public Schools, he's in sixth grade. And I was reading this, this, sharing this policy with him. I want to say, when implementing this policy, I was wondering if we can include scaffolding for development. It might be possible to use this in a way that works for both student and faculty. For example, Section 7C talks about when parents will be consulted to help de-escalate the situation. If the paragraph is parroted, shortened, and posted along with some indication of time elapsed in a non-obtrusive way, with the collective and proactive engagement, then the student may be able to utilize knowledge of this to learn to calm him or herself down. This suggestion was given to me by my child to relay to you for consideration. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Campbell.
Good evening. I am delivering this testimony anonymously on behalf of an anonymous FCPS staff member. These are their words. We are tired. Our morale is down the toilet. I am tired of being beat down physically by students at work. We spend more time working on behaviors than actually teaching. Every student is affected by another student's behavior. Student has a behavior, the class has to evacuate. Learning is lost. Last year, this was every day, all day, for the majority of the year. Staff is put into the corner with little support and resources. We feel ignored by our administration and the county. I've had many items thrown at me, some I have dodged, some have broken skin. My team is spit on all day. I have been inappropriately grabbed and witnessed staff, staff put in chokeholds. We have had staff knocked out cold, others bitten on the face, a scar remains. We are talking behaviors that can send staff to the hospital. We should be calling workers comp daily, but it's not happening. In elementary school, parents are told that there are many years to work on behaviors. Then in middle school, kids are babied. Then they come to us in high school. They are now almost grown adults and are much stronger. They are our size or bigger, and suddenly, high school needs to fix all of these issues. If parents knew what was going on, the danger their students were in, and the lack of teaching going on because of these behaviors, they would have every right to be mad. The ball needs to stop being dropped. Teacher, staff are given very little support from the county, even our own administration. We have so many behaviors in our program, yet the person we had as a coach could only focus on one student. Even then, the, the help we received was very frustrating. The coach would never work with the students. Once this coach did try, but got very frustrated with the student rather quickly, and yet the expectation is for the teachers and staff to manage these behaviors daily. It's like ABA coaches only think in one little tiny box of ideas instead of outside the box. We also feel that in meetings, we are thrown under the bus. Our PSL is notorious for doing this to us in front of parents. They always side with the parents instead of standing up for the staff and explaining to the parents that ABA is involved, and this is why things look this way. We are like a punching bag. Do this, do that, but it's never right because the support is not there. The county needs to listen to teachers who are in the middle of this. Instead, they tell us what to do but have zero clue what we experience. Training is always good, but it isn't real life. We always say half-jokingly that it would be nice if they stopped talking to us and actually show us how to work a program. Then because they, because then, they would experience what we are experiencing, and from then, we could problem solve. No two student behaviors are the same. They might be the same exact behavior, but they're not always occurring for the same reason. Eyes need to be open to what they're doing. For a solution, teachers need support beginning in elementary school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is George Torrico.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me, school board?
Yes, go ahead, please.
School board, thank you so much. Good evening. And again, thank you so much for the hard work that you have in tackling this really hard and gut-wrenching topic. It's, it's a topic that honestly, I'm not as familiar with. But when I saw that it was in discussion, and when I saw that it was happening, I, I just thought I'd, I'd listen first, and I tried to research and see what, what, what is happening. And I was surprised to see that there was a lawsuit. I was surprised to hear the testimonies of parents. I was surprised to hear the numbers of incidences that have happened. And I thought to educate myself, and I tried to research and look for data about it. I tried to look for the demographic data about it. I tried to look for breakdowns, you know? And there's so many terms and terminologies. And now, as I hear more parents, I just think about all the parents that are not here, the parents that are not being able to give their testimony, the, the Spanish-speaking parents, the parents who are immigrants, the parents who are of low income. And I think about just how much resources are necessary for the students, for the teachers, for the school system to be able to appropriately handle this. It's such a complex topic. I can't wrap my, my head around it. I, I, my heart goes out to the parents who've been dealing with this. And I, I wish you as much wisdom, and I encourage you, and I thank you for the hard work that you're doing. I yield my time. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Akshay Deeraconda.
Hi, school board, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I just want to thank you all for putting in this new policy. And I just want to thank the school for pushing to ban supine restraints and recognizing that the draft, revised draft policy follows through on this. I just want to make a couple more recommendations. I think for culture, in order to shift mindset to challenging behaviors, being communication of unmet needs, the policy should not emphasize or include the need to teach new positive behaviors. I also want to add that there's no data to support restraint and seclusion keeping people safe. There's plenty of data to show that people get hurt from it, but students and staff as per Dr. Green. Restraint and seclusion aren't crisis prevention tools. They're crisis management tools, per Dr. Green. Just making the commitment can reduce incidents by 50%. Second, 50% requires training to be predominantly collaborative and proactive, as per Dr. Green. Accordingly, we ask the school board to pass a solid, solid final policy this year, rather than a lesser policy with a sunset date. When staff see an expiration date written to a policy from the beginning, it impacts their perception of the school district's commitment to maintain these significant changes. Regarding the policy development process, Virginia passed a law requiring school districts to have a formal policy about restraint and seclusion by July 1, 2021. It is now December 11, and this is the first time that the public is being asked to provide input. Seclusion has always been disproportionately used on students with disabilities. This is a special education policy into practice, which DSS demonstrated by only inviting SEPTA and POAC rather than the general public to participate in this initial forum. The DSS published a newsletter dated December 10, 2020, and it failed to include any references to the policy development or nor the public hearing on restraint and seclusion that is taking place today. Regarding policy implementation, it's recommended that the shift days in your procedures occur on August 1, 2021, or August 2022, if 2021 is not possible, rather than the middle of the school year in January of 2022. The notice of restraint and seclusion policy should be included on the SONR form, perhaps included on a separate line to initial, in addition to the required parent guardian signature. Relying only on EAP for an emotional support for staff, this is a point of mandatory timely therapeutic debriefing. Additionally, per feedback from staff members, there are concerns that EAP has not consistently offered same-day services to support teachers who are injured by student interactions. Also, just want to say regarding reporting, the demographic data of the draft policy mandates collecting in the incident reports does not include enough data to clearly disaggregate and analyze the information. This report must, must collect special educational eligibility category as applicable, not just special education status. FCPS must be able to determine if there are specific disability subgroups being disproportionately restrained or segregated.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Haeckel.
Hi, good, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening. I am reading this testimony on behalf of Sana Bouzit, a mother of an FCPS student who was restrained and secluded, a former FCPSIA and a member of the ACSD. School members, I thank you for scheduling today's public hearing. Parents of students with disabilities, remember that during your campaigns, you came to us asking for our voice to support you. We voted for you because we believe that you are best suited to protect our children at school, to manage the administration, and to use taxpayer money to implement best practices to help our kids cope with their disabilities. On November 19, 2020, top Democrats unveiled a bipartisan federal bill to protect American students from dangerous seclusion and restraint practices. How long until you, our local leaders, vote for total immediate ban on seclusion and supine restraint? Seclusion and restraint are weapons used against our children, leading them to PTSD, trauma, anxiety, and failure. I am asking you, how many victims, media scandals, lawsuits, and how much damage does FPCS plan to do while we wait for a complete ban? You are the only ones who can make the final decision. You must take full responsibility for what is happening and what will happen to our children. Our children did not choose to be disabled. They look to you to educate them and to help them, not abuse them. My entire family life changed negatively the day my son was secluded and seclusion was used against my son. My son was secluded repeatedly over the course of a year when he was five years old. On the advice of Tina Wilkerson, ABA program manager, my son's IEP team was trying to add seclusion as a quote, "needed procedure" into my son's IEP. Count yourselves lucky that none of you have had your kids secluded or restrained. Unlike my son, none of your kids are having nightmares, wetting their beds, or losing mastered skills like potty training due to trauma and PTSD. I was also an IA at Kilmer Center, and the things I saw there continue to give me nightmares. I can only describe it as hell. I am asking you to listen to your conscience, your wisdom, and your humanity. Have pity on our children. Albert Einstein said, "Never do anything against conscience if the state demands it." Thank you. I would also like to say that while this is not my statement, I am an FCPS mom, and it could have easily been me and my child in this situation. and it could have easily been me and my child in this situation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Caitlin Erkila.
Erkila, don't worry. You're not the first. You won't be the last. Not a problem. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time, school board members and other parents, advocates. Thank you. I would really like to thank all of you for listening, for hearing us, and for being willing to revise your policies and to consider expert testimony as well as those of parents and those of us who are experts in our own children. I'm a former secondary educator and a mother of a second grader who has Down syndrome and several medical conditions from complications with leukemia from when he was two. Last year, his teachers handled many behaviors that could constitute restraint with preemptive interaction, communicating with me regularly about William's progress, and sudden and major regression. His remarkably well-trained teacher also knew that children with Down syndrome should never be restrained using supine position because many of them have a spinal malformation and condition, and when pushed down incorrectly, it can paralyze and even kill them. This has actually happened to several adults with Down syndrome in the last five years. Excuse me, I've lost my spot. William was actually enrolled in the Kennedy Krieger Institute Neurobehavioral Unit at the time due to complications from chemotherapy. There are three-minute tests to watch behavior when he was secluded, and yet watched showed immediate trigger reactions to the point that they said this was a major difficulty that was unnecessary. We also saw a huge change in his physical actions and tics. With continued testing, it showed this was actually caused by an elusive medical condition similar to seizures, not bad behavior. William's minimally verbal, choosing mostly to communicate with his dazzling smile and dance moves, and was beginning to speak using apps, but at the time, we could not determine his pain level or the seizures that were happening. This all happened in a different state last year. And as we received orders to move to Fairfax, the previous school system called a meeting specifically to edit William's BIP explicitly explaining how to guide and restrain him correctly to video examples and to offer discussions with William's new team to help him succeed. While general education hours were reduced and his behaviors became dangerous, William was never put into seclusion. It was always one-on-one to help with de-escalation in a contained classroom still with other students while keeping him safe. I'm thrilled to report William's teacher currently is still working with the KKI team. And I'm proof that training and specific dynamic holding done in a very limited way when a child is having an episode can greatly improve outcomes, especially with students who have specific physical disabilities. It also helps support and encourage the teachers, creating a stronger work environment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Moreno.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Moreno, and I am an FCPS mom. I'm reading testimony on behalf of Eda Mandell. Mrs. Mandell writes, "I'm a 31-year-old..." I'm sorry. "I'm a 31-year Fairfax County resident, and my now-adult children attended and graduated from Fairfax County schools. I've been an educator for over 39 years, working at several after-school religious programs, teaching preschoolers through high schoolers, and eventually directing school programs for 10 years. Before falling in love with teaching, I once upon a time studied criminal justice in college and then worked in Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, for their Department of Human Services and for their Department of Child Protective Services. In my work, I had to remove children from abusive homes and visit young teens who are already in jail. I'm sure this work was traumatizing to those children, and it was at times traumatizing to me too. In more recent years, working as a religious school educator, I've had students who used violent and explosive behavior when they couldn't otherwise communicate their needs or let teachers know they couldn't meet the expectations that were set up for them. Some of those students ended up in special education placements in FCPS, where I have since learned the staff used restraint and seclusion as strategies to manage these difficult behaviors. When I recently saw pictures posted online of these so-called calm-down rooms, those jail cells for my students, my babies, who I've known for years, I was stunned. I was horrified. I felt sick to my stomach. It's been 30 years since I worked in baby jails, and I can't believe that FCPS is still locking children in cells today." This concludes Mrs. Mandell's testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Sandra Heinz.
Thank you. I'm an FCPS mom of a daughter with high needs with autism, minimally verbal. Luckily, we have not gone through restraint and seclusion as so many of the parents that we've heard tonight, but I'm here in the hopes that we never have to. The thing that I noticed when reading over the policy, this policy is supposed to be in part about building trust between parents and the school district. But unfortunately, in many ways, it just simply fails that. The language, especially where it describes situations in which seclusion will be allowed, is just too vague and too broad. You're asking parents like me, who have a child who cannot speak for themselves and who cannot describe what they've gone through, to simply trust the person who was involved in the incident, even though we know for a fact that these incidents have gone badly in the past. Further to that, I very much applaud the idea of banning seclusion, and that that is your stated goal. But we need to see concrete measurements on the way to getting that goal. So, you know, in a year from now, do you want to reduce cases by 50%? We need to see that that is happening along the way and that your measures are effective along the way, rather than just having this conversation again over in 2023. I was also just very struck by the lack of accountability measures in this policy. I am very happy that there will be more training for more effective interventions. But what happens when seclusion is still used wrongly? What happens when this happens again? What is your plan for dealing with that in a school setting? Is it more training, or is it other punitive behaviors? How will people be held accountable? And finally, on that note, I think something that came up in one of the school board meetings that I thought was a very good point is that if we are going to continue to have seclusion for some time on its way to being banned, it would be reasonable, I think, to include cameras in seclusion areas so that if, God forbid, this happens, a parent can see what happened and not solely rely on testimony, especially when their child cannot speak. And with that, I'll take my extra time.
Thank you. I'll now call the three no-show speakers. Number 19, Katie Bulb. Katie Bulb. Okay, number 23, Carmen Ramos. Carmen Ramos. Our final no-show speaker, Melanie Lickenfelt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Excellent. I'm speaking today because my son, who has been a Fairfax County student for his entire seven-and-a-half-year student career, personally spent well over an entire year, almost daily, in a seclusion cell. This is a fact I am confident of because he could not ride the bus or use Kiss and Ride during that time like the other children. Instead, I would have to park my car, go inside to retrieve him from the seclusion room, and wait for him to calm down, most times until the school was empty of everyone other than administrators and janitors before going home. This was our daily routine. My son was only six years old at the time. Sorry, I mean, just one moment. I have no idea how much time he spent there, and neither does anyone else outside of the select few who put or kept him in there because the time was never recorded nor was the incidence. He experienced other incidents of restraint and seclusion as well, but this was by far the most egregious period in our time. Because I have only three minutes, I can barely touch on all the ways this affected my son and my family. My son became very angry and violent, and it eventually bled into the home. He went through huge periods of time of depression, and I watched him melt away as a human being. And he was completely lost for years at a time. I was told that this was normal as I went to pick him up, that this was part of the normal recourse and procedure for Fairfax County when I would come to find him secluded that way or restrained. Fast forward many years. Eventually, my son went through years of therapy, private placement. We got him to Kennedy Krieger Institute Neurobehavioral Unit, where they came up with a procedure in which they said that restraint should be only used if absolutely necessary and for as little time as possible just to keep him safe. That that was not a form of punishment and was not a long-term solution. Immediate, address the issue, and release. My son's behavior completely changed. He has since evolved. People tell me all the time how Fairfax County is the best school system in the world, and I always question that. I always question now, what is normal? And what does it mean to be the best? Because it is the best for those who are the most equipped, for children who are the most able. But you get to define what is normal, and you get to decide. If FCPS is the best school system for the most equipped or the most challenged, thank you.
Matt, I'm sure that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Mulberg. I'd like to thank everyone for virtually attending today's public hearing and for sharing your comments and your concern. The board will take action on restraint and seclusion policy at the December 17 regular meeting, and this hearing is now adjourned. Good night.